Hey there everyone, so welcome back to another episode. I'm Indy and we're just gonna get started. So today I have something special for you guys and it's actually a way for me to actually get into a habit of doing this, which is we are not playing career mode, we are not playing versus computer, but we are gonna be reviewing a game. This is not commentary by the way, but I do like to every so often review old games from professional players or legendary players and really try to get into their mindset and see what the board is all about. Now, the way that I typically do this is I try to find the story in the game itself. I know that kinda sounds weird, but bear with me because this is the first time I'm ever doing this. I haven't looked at any of these games yet besides the one I did a commentary on. And so we are gonna go into, ah, you know, what kind of, what, what should, what should we do? Which game should we do? Ooh, game of the century? Well, least it'll, you know what, let's do game of the century. Let's just do a classic one. I've never seen this before, so I don't know what this is about, but let's play it.
The game of the century was one of the most significant.
Okay, so this is against Go Sagan versus Honenbo Shusai. So this is a Go Sagan game and this is, uh, was played on October 16th, 1933. So let's get started and let's take a look at this game. Okay, so I'm really excited for this. I'm super, super excited. Uh, again, we already know the win results is White won by two points. So Honenbo Shusai played against Ghost Sagan and Ghost Sagan lost by two points. And so let's kinda go through this. Hold on, let me get my axes on right here. Okay, so that we can all follow along and we can do stuff. Hold on, maybe, uh, sure, yeah. Okay, I'm trying to make sure it lines up better, okay? And, oh, alright, so I think that's good enough. Maybe a little shorter on this end, there we go. Okay, so I think that, that, that grid line is good enough now. Alright, so what I usually do when it comes to studying a game is understand the story or the conversation that's been asked. Uh, it's just a way that I kinda like to look at the board. Again, this is not a way that everyone does it, or maybe they do do it and I just don't know about it. But let's just go through the first four moves right here. Okay, so if we take a look at the first four moves, one, this is a cross opening. Meaning that white is on the opposite end and black is on the opposite end. So this is gonna be more of a, a, a fighting type of game. Okay, again, I don't know too much about Go Sagan. I don't know too much about Honenbo Shusai. I am not a studious student of history. Uh, I'm a casual player and this is, I'm just reading this off right now. And what I can say just from the opening itself is that black is trying to balance out their opening. One being, uh, the 4-4 and one being at the 3-3, so 4-4, 3-3. This is pretty much telling White that I wanna have territory in the top right-hand corner and I wanna be more influential on the bottom left-hand corner, okay? At least per the opening. Now, White, on the other hand, is taking three fours, two, three fours. So this is a three, four opening, that's a three, four opening. And it's looking like they are engaged with the black stone over here. Okay, again, you can have a three, four on this side or a three, four on this side, but both of them are in closer proximity to this black stone than they are to this black stone over here. So what that tells me is that the white, Honenbo Shusai, might be a very territorial player, yes? But he's gonna be more influential up on this end rather than on this bottom end. Eh, rightfully so, just because on this bottom end, black is already wanting to play influence. So again, if we take a look, this is a three, four opening where white is on the fourth line on this axis and this axis. So this is why I say if we put a white stone here, that will play into the influence in this top right-hand corner than on this area in the bottom. Okay, anyways, and now Go Sagan decides to do ten again because why not? Just play in the center and see what unfolds, let White have sente and see what White wants to do. Uh, having center presence does allow, uh, a bit of a leeway, especially when it comes into center fighting. Okay, again, notice, again, this is my first time looking at this game, okay? So I've never seen this game before, okay? I wanna be straight, clear, but notice what I just said a moment ago, where if you can see a white stone being on the 4-4, it's playing in line with the two cornerstone. And again, it's gearing towards a more fighty territory in the center on the top right-hand side. And Go Sagan again decides to protect the corner. Again, Honenbo Shusai wants to fight in the center. Alright, so Go Sagan's taking the corner and now Honenbo Shusai is taking his own quarter, uh, just to kinda balance out the territorial power. Okay. Go Sagan decides to take the center bottom star point. Okay, putting a little bit of pressure on this, not too much, but he's pretty much saying that I am going to start pushing my influence. I'm gonna let my stones build on one another's strength. Okay? Honenbo Shusai responds, I think, right here, saying that I'm not going to let you approach my corner. I am gonna take whatever territory I can here. And Go Sagan's like, okay, you do that, but I'm gonna make a nice box. This is my box of influence. If White, so say for instance, White plops a stone here, okay? Then black has every right to start pressing White, okay? You can see that, uh, White's gonna get really surrounded. So this is like a very nice box, a very nice ability for black to just start fighting in the center. Doesn't want White to enter. If White starts entering, there's gonna be a big fight, which is gonna be in black's favor. And White's like, I'm not gonna have any of that. I'm gonna take my, uh, my top left-hand corner now. And Go Sagan's like, yeah, you can take it. I'm gonna come in on the top right here. I'm gonna press down and reduce your power and potentially if you defend, I just go right here and, uh, just start reducing your center influence, right? You're gonna be like something like this. I can see Go Sagan trying to press White onto the second and third line everywhere. Taking huge control in the center. That's what I'm seeing. Again, are they gonna do that? I have no clue. White decides to back off. Again, the invasion coming in is gonna be really powerful. Black decides to defend, so White can easily, so White can easily slide in, okay? Right here. Okay, White can easily slide into black's influence. So black wants to block that by kicking. White stands up with the kick and black defends the cut. Okay, so black has strong presence on the right-hand side of the board. White, again, is gonna respond, doing the same maneuver he did back here, except with the exception that he has a much stronger connection than the loose knights move or the large knights move over here. Uh, this is a straight lines to the, uh, what, what stone is this? The C, I think this is the C8 stone? Let me fix my, um, let me fix my little thing here. It's kinda off-center. So let's try to fix it. There we go. Off-center slightly still. There we go. Okay, so it's the C8 stone. And, uh, black is like, okay, well, if you're gonna approach again, I'm gonna defend my whole quadrant right here. So I want the whole left, bottom left quadrant. White's like, I'm sorry, I can't give it to you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna come in and I'm going to reduce your territory. I can take your corner, I can make a base and I can try to do something here. And black's like, I can see that, don't want you to do that. And White's like, well, I'm gonna start messing around, threatening to connect under. And black is most likely gonna try to do, uh, move like here very soon. Uh, black's like, you know what, I don't want you to, you know, build a base and try to do stuff here. So I'm gonna keep pressing you. White's like, okay, well, I'm gonna take your corner. You know, you can't have all the bottom left. You're on the fourth line. I'm on the third line. I have more right to live in the bottom than you do. Black's like, that's fine. I've been wanting to play an influence game. So what's happening so far? Well, if we can take a look, black has been, or white has been playing all on third line. And black has been playing all the influence in the corner, or not in the corner, in the center. So we can see White has corner, almost corner, corner. Three corners, one center for the most part. In this position, I don't know who's winning. I really don't. But all I can say is that black with a single move, say that White fix, black with a single move can play right here. Okay, start building up his moil in the center, maybe putting a little bit of pressure over here, maybe, okay? Who knows? Okay, what was, oh, okay, White did play there, okay? And then black again plays right there. So again, my intuition is, is getting a lot better. I, I feel like I'm understanding the story a lot better and I'm hoping that it kinda makes sense to you guys. Alright, so in this position, black is wanting to leap out from his corner into the center to connect with the rest of it and have bigger center influence. Again, with White taking all the bottom and three quarters, center is the last frontier. And Go Sagan has to kinda solidify the center. White's like, okay, well, my group is getting surrounded, don't want that. Now, if I was Go Sagan at this position, now I have to ask myself, what is the story that White's telling me? Or what is the conversation that White is asking or showing? Right now, white's pretty stable everywhere. This is the only group that isn't stable. If anything, this move right here is a defensive move. I am running away from your surround and I wanna connect back to my third limestone here. So we can imagine black playing here and then white playing here, right? White can be connected. Now, White could also do another two-space extension, closing his skirt on this side and having a nice influential position, okay? So White wants to escape. So for black, again, it's beneficial if black blocks and White goes towards the center. It's much more beneficial because again, there's a lot more black stones in the center and as White is running towards the center, black can build his outside influence and attack White. So black plays here at move 31, okay? Blocking White's escape. White is going to make a contact move. Remember, your contact when you are in your last desperate attempt, trying to stretch and force your opponent to attach so that you can build better shape. Black hotties, white probably stands up. No, black, uh, white double hotties, black atari's, white atari's, black takes, white atari's back, black fills and White jumps out. Okay, so White is going to sacrifice certain stones here. Okay, if black atari's, White connects, black atari's out, White connects, black, White. So this is a beneficial attack for White, cause with this, okay? Black is surrounded, White is strong, pretty much in a good chunk, okay? Maybe black does this, white does this, black goes here, White goes here, right? Something like this. And look at black stones are completely surrounded with white stones, which is strong everywhere. So black sees that, black needs to retreat the stone out. Now, this stone, black is also saying, I don't care about this stone. What I care about is building my center outside here, reducing your ability. Because if you can see, if White plays here, right? You can see White building the right-hand quadrant, lower right-hand quadrant. Black comes in, White plays, black goes in, White plays. So you can see White is coming in, entering and reducing black as it is building better shape. Okay, and White can jump, maybe black decides to go here, White goes here. And then, you know, White does things. I don't know. We can see something like this happening and you can see if White's able to survive everywhere, right? White has the whole bottom, the middle, has a lot of reducing moves over here, okay? Black's not looking too good. Allowing White to just go haywire, while like wildfire into his moil, not a good sign. So black is doing this in preparation to prevent White from kinda going out of control into this area. White fixes his cut, black comes out to contain White into his area, okay? White sees that this top area is getting a little bit more dicey, doesn't want black to approach and then slide under. So then most likely, black is gonna play somewhere over here to solidify his presence in the top left-hand quadrant. Okay, not yet though, cause black wants to kinda have nice shape here. White fixes, black decides to go for a cut. Ooh, we're, we're having a very feisty fight right now. Look at this. So black is trying to reduce White's, uh, corner. White is trying to reduce black's presence in this middle part. Atari, fix, fix, goes in, protects the cut, attaches here hotties to solidify its presence. Black comes here, threatening to connect to these three stones and entering into the corner. So he's asking a question. Move 59 is black asking a question. Do you wanna prevent me from coming out or do you want to prevent me from coming into your corner? I'll take either one. If you prevent me from coming into corner by playing at, uh, what is it, R17, then I'm going to surround these three stones. If you block me, I'm gonna go into your corner and live in the corner. White's like, go ahead, live in the corner. Black's like, I'm going to and I'm gonna build, build a good shape and connect my stones. White's like, go ahead. Black's like, you better watch out. I'm coming in. White fixes the cut, black lives in the corner or attempts to live in the corner. It's not alive yet. So this whole exchange is black solidifying his outside presence and now taking the corner. Woo, this is a lot. Alright, so if we take a look at White's situation, black just successfully invaded in here for now. I mean, White can start peeping, poking and all of that, but essentially, black looks to be barely alive. Alright, so assuming that black's alive, my lower right is done, okay? I'm in trouble. I need two eyes here. This is not two eyes. If I move here, black just extends up. This is a false eye. So right now, it is in hyper urgent mode that I kinda force black to live in the corner while I fix my eye shape, okay? I, if I lose this whole bottom right-hand quadrant, I lose the game because then I only have this little bit right here, this little bit and this bit and black has everything else. So I need to survive here. So that's the first thing that I see is that there's, again, what I see is, say that White plays elsewhere, black plays here, right? White has to connect, no eye, okay? Black pushes in, White pushes in, black plays here at shape, okay? White fixes and then what? Black plays here, White goes here, black plays here, okay? White plays here, black plays here, right? There, there's a lot of oggy, but right now, White doesn't really have any eyes, okay? And so, um, black has to be careful, okay? So White decides to poke, black blocks, white pokes, again, black blocks. So now, black is living and now White is going to kinda surround these stones right here. Actually didn't see that. Again, black wants to have the center part. White is now alive, White has two eyes in this area now. Again, if we take a look, play this, play this, okay? Play this, okay, one eye, okay? Two eye, right, this is two eyes. There we go, White is alive, okay? So White is going to try to take this group here, black is gonna escape, surrounding these stones. White, again, is gonna look into this cut right here. So White, black has to save one or the other and most likely, black's gonna sacrifice this stone and save connecting here. First, black takes sente, White connects, black moves out, White plays Atari and black plays up, okay? Connecting his group again, we can see center influence, alright. Now, White is playing here. If black extends, which is his next move, White can't connect underneath or threaten to connect underneath, okay? And then maybe just back off or something. So this is a move to hopefully have a future in connection underneath and then reduce black's corner. White plays right here, threatening to come in, black blocks, white cuts, black blocks, disconnecting the two stones, white follows, black atari's and atari's or threaten to Atari. Atari goes up, goes down, kills these two stones at sacrificing those two stones. And we can see takes, takes, connecting under and then black comes in to the top. So again, we saw that move a couple of moves ago. This move again is the sliding to reduce White's potential here. Again, White doesn't have any eyes in this area yet, hasn't made any. There is room to make some, like right here, uh, but depends on what White wants to do. Again, we have a cut right here for black, black can play here, threatening for the Atari and then capture this whole area. So White has to play either here at the Q7, but then that allows black to come in some more. So I don't know what White wants to do in this case. White decides to find that this is a bigger value, reducing the center here is the bigger value. And black is like, okay, you think that's a bigger value? I'm going to destroy your potential in this area. White's like, okay, go ahead, take those three stones. And black's like, I'm gonna protect my top. White's like, I'm gonna connect my stones all together so you can't enter. And now I'm jumping in. I might be able to save something. Block, Atari, connect, Atari, okay? And then black is gonna, White's gonna connect right here. Black might come down. I don't know yet. And now, black is coming in to reduce White's corner. White is preventing black from connecting back, so White's like, go ahead, I dare you to invade. This move at move 118, if you guys can see, prevents black from playing this move over here, okay? Because with this move, say that White wants to kinda do something, White can't, right? Cause then black is now connected, okay? And just play at one or the other, right? Black's connected on the bottom, okay? So that's one variation. So White is saying, I don't want you to connect at all. Go live in the corner, we're gonna fight. Black's like, sure. And White's like, okay, let's go. Black's like, I'm gonna run now. I'm scared. And White's like, I know. Again, you're in my corner, buddy. You're not in your corner. Your corner's over down here. My corner's here. I don't know why you invaded, but I am gonna start reducing you because you're letting me in. Okay, again, tiger's mouth shape, gonna give up that stone and start attacking this area and expanding into your area. And then there we go, I have an eye, potentially. Again, White sacrificing these three stones, like go ahead, take it. I'm gonna build my outside influence to reduce your center. And black's like, sure. And White's like, I know, I'm gonna start taking. And then I'm gonna move out. Uh-oh, black, look at this, you let the doorway open, black. Now, White's gonna jump. Maybe black will block, right? Block, block, that's a nice block. Oh, black does play there, okay? So black blocks and then White's like, okay, well, I'm gonna live in here. I invaded you. I'm gonna live in this area. There's nothing you can do. Even if black plays here, White just pulls back. What's, what's black gonna do, right? Cut? I don't think so. Right? White lives. Black's like, okay, I'm in trouble. And White's like, I know, you're gonna get clamped next turn. Black's like, no, I'm not. And White's like, yes, you are. Atari, I'm gonna split you. Black's like, sure. And White's like, I'm gonna play here? Black's like, okay, I'm gonna live in the corner. And White's like, I will let you live in the corner. The reason being is cause you are only on the first line. I get to build my center influence and then this cut here coming up, right here, looks pretty good. Okay, I'm gonna keep living in the corner, living in the center right here, sorry. Right there, cut. This cut looking very nice. Okay, coming out, going, entering into the moil. Block, black is blocking in. White's like, ha, ha, ha. Black's like, okay, I'm in trouble. White's most likely gonna come in and maybe connect or split very soon. This group from all the other black groups. Black sees that, White is like, I'm gonna bamboo this baby, okay? Black is like, uh, I'm gonna protect myself. White's like, I'm coming in. Now, this move, move 160 is a very interesting move for me. I just realized this. What happened? Well, if black blocks this way, right? White hops. Black wedges, white, fix, okay? And I don't know. Maybe fix this way, coming in, now threatening to kinda cut something, right? Cut, Atari, right? Something's happening here, okay? Something's happening here. And I don't know if it's, uh, what I'm seeing, but it looks like there's two ways for White to connect very soon, like I move 160. Excuse me? Black attaches, White now enters this area, looking at this cut right here, okay? This cut at move L6. Black is looking to disconnect White's center from here. And what, black, White is like, no, I'm not gonna be disconnected. Even you disconnect me, I Atari you. I'm good. Okay, black's like, I know, I'm gonna cut you off fully. And White's like, okay, I'm gonna push through and disconnect this group from this group. And black's like, I see that. And White's like, I know. Now, what is, what is black gonna do? This group is dead. Yes, these three stones are dead, but my gosh, White got all of these stones here? Disconnect, Atari. Now, the question is, black has to be careful. What happened? This group right here is about to get in big trouble. White, black is gonna have to take the single stone. These three stones are the oggy stone and if black doesn't pay attention, which I highly doubt, cause Go Sagan's Go Sagan, um, these three stones might come in very handy for Honenbo Shusai. Black comes in. White's like, okay, I know that this disconnect is a real threat right here. I might have to sacrifice the two stones, but I don't want you to, to get everything. So black's like, I'm gonna connect. And White is most likely gonna connect right here. I think White should connect right here. White does not. I wonder why. Well, what happens if black pushes in? Okay, White plays, black cannot play here. Okay, white plays, black cannot play here to Atari. Look at that, because black is itself is an Atari. If black plays here, white connects Atari and out. Beautiful, beautiful, uh, rendition right there. Black blocks, white connects, a snapback coming in, black has to connect. And again, doesn't matter which side, because this side is connected with the Atari stone. White decides to peep. Okay, this is a powerful move right here, a very powerful move. Why is that? Because if black ignores, say that black decides to do, you know. The, say that black decides to do this, for instance. White can do this, threatening to connect. If black plays here. White plays. Here. White plays here or here? White plays here. Right? White's gonna try to take these five stones. Okay? Something's gonna happen. I don't know yet. I saw something. Uh, black decides to enter. Okay? Now black is pushing, the cut coming up is pretty powerful. Whites protecting the cut, black is Atari, okay? White is preventing black from making any eye shape. Black is coming out, threatening to connect to these, uh, capturing these two stones here. Actually. I wonder why black never captured these two stones. Right? Black just has to play here, capture. Anyways. Black comes out destroying the moil, white throws in. Atari. Uh, that's what I was, that's what I saw earlier. Okay. Black takes, white comes in Atari. Ooh, snapback, look at this. If black saves Atari, kill. Oof, ooh, that, that's brutal. Black has to fill here, white goes up, killing those five stones. So I was right in my, my prediction that these five stones are, are, are getting bullied, okay? So the question is now, what is black going to do? Well, white says that these five stones are good. But to disconnect fully this group to four, six, seven stones. I think is what white's intention is for this move at one ninety. Why is saying, I want to disconnect all of this? Blacks like, nope. And white goes in for the kill. Okay, blacks like, nope. Whites like, yep. Now, if black pushes in, white just pushes in. Or. Yeah, if black pushes in, white plays here. Right? I don't know. I don't know why white did that. Okay, wedge Atari. So forcing to take. Take. Lock. Uh-oh. Atari. Atari, so we're in endgame now, take, uh-uh, the disconnect here. Atari, take, okay, not disconnected. Okay? Okay, preventing from anyone entering, okay? Again, these two stones are now dead. Like I said, I'm surprised he, he let that happen. Atari, Atari down, capture. Ooh. I did not see that. Okay, block. Okay, so this whole group right here, you guys can see is now dead. This group is dead. This group is questionable now. I don't see two eyes just yet. I really don't see two eyes just yet. This group right here, no, this group right here has two eyes. Okay, it's already connected. So this group is not dead. Is this thing that is the linchpin between this whole entire white group? Okay, okay, okay. Woo, I thought I was going crazy, but this is just fighting everywhere, fighting everywhere. Like, look at all of these moves. Black connects, but again, that's not gonna save black. Black is not in any position to get saved right now. One liberty. Again, these two stones are the linchpin to this whole entire group right here. Black has to be careful, okay? One, two liberties left. And cannot lose track of the two stones here. One liberty, he captures, okay, coming out. He fixes, coming out. Blocks. Blocks. Cuts. Interesting. Look at this whole entire group right here. This whole group, if white plays here. I don't know. Okay, block. Okay? Preventing from the Atari killing this eye. Okay, I get that. Okay, okay, again, this is just endgame here. Interesting, forming the first eye here. And that's it. All right, that's it. Wow, what a game. Now I didn't want to do a commentary, but you guys can see I'm, I'm wrapping my thoughts, thinking of what the story is. Thinking of how the pieces are playing with each other. And then trying to figure out what a nice move would be. And you guys saw that three or four times in this video. I was able to kind of predict what's happening and what, where I would generally want to play. I don't know the exact moves. I don't read this out and I'm pretty sure they had like a three hour time limit. Um, but it's like, I, I'm seeing moves. And I hope that this kind of gives you an idea of what I generally do every so often. And again, just a disclaimer, I've never seen this game before. I've never seen a YouTube. I know a lot of YouTubers probably talked about the bloodiest game of the century. I never did. I never watched it and this is my first time viewing this game. And so. Uh, again, this is just a way for me to practice seeing global perspective, what should I be looking at? As well as trying to. See how the professional players play. Um, again, I'm trying to get to dawn level and I'm hoping that what I'm doing is. A good tactic to train myself to be a dawn level player. Anyways, that's it for today. I hope that you guys enjoyed this, uh, rendition of the bloodiest game of the century. Uh, why was it called the bloodiest game of the century? Because of reasons, I don't know. There's a lot of fighting going on and a lot of, uh, keeping track of groups. So that's probably why. And, um, yeah, this was a fun game. This was a fun match. But that's all I got. So thank you guys so much for watching and until next time, I'll see you guys in the next episode. Take care, everybody.